Good morning, Chairman. I'm a Vice Chair and Commissioners, and welcome to the Wednesday, July 7th, Board of County Commissioners meeting. First off, we'd like to recognize several folks from the Kansas Society of Professional Engineers who received an award during this year's conference. I'll read out the names. Tony Rome, Engineer of the Year; Lynn Packer, Government Engineer; Rex Ritter, Intern Engineer; Mark Dolcek, Young Engineer; Donald Rathbourn, KSPE Award; Chairman Meitzner, Outstanding Citizen Award; Paul Gunzelman, Outstanding Engineer Project for the Riverfront Stadium; Alex Lane, Professional Development Award with the City of Derby; Janet Hansen, Teacher, High School; Sarah Cromer, Teacher, Middle School; and Lori Rice, Teacher, Elementary. Chairman?
Yeah, thank you, Akeem. I think our last meeting, I was humbled to be honored, and then when I went up there to this statewide conference to find that the City of Derby was recognized and the Riverfront Baseball Stadium, and two teachers from Mays, and another engineer, and our own Lynn Packard was awarded, so out of these ten awards or so, or twelve awards, our community in our county area was represented by at least six of them. And these were statewide vetted and awarded by a state group of, there were six regions, and it was quite an honor to see how many, the impact that the Wichita engineer areas and the Sedgwick County engineer areas are having in the state. And so, obviously, Derby's done it. My congrats to Derby, and congrats to the baseball stadium, and all of the individual awards were, and the teachers were quite emotional about their award recipients, so it was just a great event, and so I just wanted to publicly recognize and congratulate all of those award winners. So, thank you for pulling this up for everybody to see.
You're welcome, Chairman. Okay, moving on, we're excited to announce the Sedgwick County Fair is back, beginning today, and runs through Saturday, July 10th. The fair was held, first held in October 1940, more than 75 years ago. The 2020 pandemic was the first time the fair has been canceled since World War II. Sedgwick County will have a booth, and the Health Department will also have vaccinations available at this year's fair. They'll be there on Friday, and also Saturday. To purchase tickets in advance, or to find out more information, visit the www.ourcountyfair.com, and that's the website there. Okay, Commissioners, looking at today's agenda, there are several appointments and resignations for your approval, and under New Business, a report from the Board of Bids and Contracts from their meeting on July 1st. And with that, Chairman, I'll turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everybody. Good to see everybody again, and again, nice to have a few people here in the audience, so we continue to plow through from the effects of the terrible COVID pandemic. So, with that said, welcome again. We'll call the meeting to order of Wednesday, July 7th, of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Invocation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
We're diligent to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Rule call. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, I think we received one email for public agenda. Has anybody got anything to comment about the emails? There being none, entertain a motion to approve the public comments that were sent.
Motion to receive and file.
And second that. Any other comments? Don't see any. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And I didn't see anybody signed up to address us, but we do have a few people I don't recognize. Is there anybody from the public wanting to address the commission? And a public comment? I don't see any, so we do not have any other public comment in the public agenda item. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of June 16, 2021.
Commissioners, you received a copy of the June 16th minutes? Any comments or questions? If not, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, and second, the minutes of the June 16th meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, accept the resignation of Wade Moore from the Sedgwick County 5th District Citizens' Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun?
Mr. Chairman, like Papun County Counselor, we can handle items B and C together if it's the will of the commission. Both items have to do with Commissioner Howell's Citizens Advisory Board. Item B is the resignation of Wade Moore, who because of time constraints and other issues cannot continue to serve on Mr. Howell's board. And item C is a resolution appointing Joseph Elmore to his Citizens Advisory Board. That resolution's in proper form, and ask he approve the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to say thank you to Wade Moore. His heart is extremely good. He wants to serve the community in so many different ways. If you know Wade Moore, he's a pastor, he runs a school, and he's just very, very involved in the community, and unfortunately, he's not able to give us his time because he just has too much going on. So, he recognized that, but I wanted to just say thank you to him. He's a great person, and I love him and his service for this community, so thank you for him. And then, to replace him, I have Joseph Elmore. He's in the audience today. If you know Joseph, he actually is a commissioner, if you would like, when you come to the podium, if you'd like to share about that, he's been appointed by the Kansas Senate to serve in a role, one of his titles is Commissioner for the State of Kansas, and so he also lives in my district, and is a tremendous servant of the community, does a tremendous job involved in many, many ways, but I know he's excited to be on this board. He's actually already attended, even though he's not been appointed to the board, he's already attended the meetings. And I would be remiss while I'm speaking not to recognize John Nicholson in the back of the room is also on the Citizens Advisory Board. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Wade Moore and appoint Joseph Elmore to fill a position on CAB V.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And here to present the award is Kelly Aron.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Joseph, you raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Sedgwick County 5th District Citizens Advisory Board to help me God. Well, congratulations.
Joseph, good to see you again. Haven't seen you in a while.
Yes.
Welcome back from the last year of hiding out with the rest of us, so welcome.
I'm really happy to see a lot of faces that I recognize. Makes it so much easier to speak. I want to thank you all for appointing me, and I, it's going to increase my horizon. There's some things I want to be involved in, and this would allow me to do that. And I thank you, Commissioner Howell, for appointing me to this position, and thank you all. Hope to see you soon.
All right, we'll see you around. Thank you, congratulations. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, accept the resignation of Ryan Pearson from the position of Trustee for the Sedgwick County Valley Center Township Board, 4th District.
Okay, Mr. Papun?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, items D and E can be taken together. They both involve the same subject matter. Item D is accepting the resignation of Ryan Pearson. He could no longer serve on the Valley Center Township Board because he moved out of that district. And item E is a resolution that'll be appointing Justin Nakarado to the board. By state statute, the Board of County Commissioners fill township positions when there is a vacancy. So, the action would be to accept the resignation of Ryan Pearson and to appoint Justin Nakarado to Valley Center Township trustee position.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mike. I want to thank Ryan for his service. We had a couple of conversations around the Valley Center Township, so I want to just thank him for stepping in and for continuing to kind of have a smooth transition for Justin. I also want to thank Mr. Jim Weber, Tom Stoltz, Mike Papun, Lisa Corr, and Carol Cole for helping us all work through. Anytime someone kind of steps down, it's kind of a, can be a tricky situation to get someone filled. So, I really appreciate all the help that went into filling this position, and I believe that Justin will be a great asset to this township. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resignation of Ryan Pearson and accept, or and appoint Justin Nakarado to the Valley Center Township trustee position.
Okay, I'll second that. Is there any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye, and I echo any time these township appointments. Thanks for all the services that all the township people serve, and it's an important role to fill, so thank you again to all the township board members. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item F, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on July 1, 2021.
Good morning, Ms. Joe. Did you have to set your alarm? Because usually it's the afternoon.
I'm a little lonely, being the only one on new business. I don't know how to act.
Good to see you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on July 1st, we have one item that we seek your approval for, and this is the recommendation to accept the five-year quote from Caiogen North American Holdings Incorporated, and this is in the amount of $97,050. So, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of this item.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about the item on the Board of Bids? And I don't see any, so I will make a motion to approve the item as presented on the board, from the Board of Bids and Contractors.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, I don't see other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye, thank you. Thanks, Joe. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Tom Stoltz with the Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items G through W this morning.
Okay, Commissioners, we have consent items G through W. Is any comments or questions about those? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion to approve consent items G through W.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Chairman, good morning. No update legislative-wise, however, I did receive your email. After talking with Manager Stoltz, I am going to ask KAC for an updated link that actually works, and then I'll hopefully have a report back to you here soon, sir.
Right, I think the Commissioners received a message from KAC that they were kind of formulating, gathering information about formulating their, the KAC's legislative agenda, and I know we've had some good discussions over the last few months about various items, so feel free, Commissioners, to weigh in on that as soon as we find the link that works.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else to add on that? Mr. Papun, you had anything to add on that? No?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Committee reports, or I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Does anybody have anything to report on the boards or the committees that they serve on? I don't see any, so we don't have any committee reports to come in on. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Anybody other? I see Commissioner Dennis has something under other.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the fact that Akeem mentioned that the Sedgwick County Fair starts tonight. There'll be a parade down Main Street in Cheney this evening. Following that, I know all of the Commissioners have been invited to dinner if they'd like to join the fair group there this evening. I plan on attending both of those events, so I look forward to several days of enjoyment at the Sedgwick County Fair. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I think Mr. Papun's going to be in the lawyer float, I understood, so he's going to be leading that. Mr. Lopez, Commissioner Lopez, that's what was that? Sorry.
Okay, thank you so much.
Coffee over here.
Well, I just wanted to say that the Hayesville Chamber is doing a Beat the Virus event on Friday from 8:00 to noon, and anybody who comes, they can get a free vaccine, and the first 65 people that get their vaccine will receive a $25 gift card to a Hayesville business. So, if you have not been vaccinated, you are more than welcome to come. Again, that is at the Community Building from 8:00 to noon on Friday.
Okay, thank you for that announcement. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of things I'd like to share. Number one, my wife and I took two of our oldest grandkids to Sedgwick County Zoo last night. This is the time of the year, they don't do this all the time, but they do, they're doing it in July. If you check the website, it's scz.org, sedgwickcountyzoo.org, you'll see information about Twilight Tuesdays. We did this last night. It's only $3 a ticket. We took my, we took my two oldest grandchildren to the zoo, and we had a tremendous time. It was great weather, and I know that there's at least three more, I believe three more events this month, the 13th, 20th, and 27th of this month. Again, the zoo's open until 8:30 for $3. So, this is sponsored, I guess, by, or hosted by Cox Communications. I just want to say thank you to Cox for doing that. I think it's a great opportunity for the community, and it's pretty hot these days, but last night was absolutely, was wonderful. I got some great pictures of my grandkids. Second thing is, I've been doing numerous community meetings. Of course, I have the CAB V Board, which meets the first Friday of each month, and it meets at the Bread of Life Building on 1301 East Galena. That's the first Friday of each month from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. But I also have a coffee. I generally meet the last Friday of each month down in Derby, and it's early, it's from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., and it's come and go. It's, there's no agenda. The people that show up, they pick the topics. They talk about whatever they want to talk about. They tell me what they think, or ask me questions, or whatever, but it's, this is their meeting, excuse me, this is their meeting, and I've been doing this for, really, for a number of years now. The COVID did shut that down, and I used to do this every week, and now I'm basically doing that once a month. And so, to counterbalance that meeting, I'm also starting a new meeting. This will be at Range 54, which is a firing range, but it's on Kellogg. It's 5725 East Kellogg Drive. The name of the business is called Range 54. They have two classrooms, and they're graciously allowing me to use the classroom for community meeting with people who are interested in speaking with the Commissioner, or telling me what you think. Again, so this is going to be on generally the second Monday of each month. The first one of these will be this coming Monday, July 12th, from 4:00 p.m. till 5:30 p.m. Again, I'll provide coffee, and soda, and water, so if you guys would like to have something to whet your whistle, and chat with Commissioners, come and go, ad hoc, however you like to do it, this is your meeting, but it's an opportunity to bend my ear on whatever is important to this community. So, there's three opportunities now for people to meet with me each month, and so I wanted to share that. Again, it's 5725 East Kellogg Drive, Range 54, this coming Monday, July 12th, from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And then, another exciting thing in the community is at 10:00 this morning, there's a press conference out at WSU Tech where they're announcing, WSU Tech is announcing a pilot training program. It's a big deal, and Textron is going to be there, and Textron actually has built and is donating a plane for this training, and that plane will be exhibited out there, and it's got the WSU logo and the shocker on the tail and things like that, so it's an exciting time, another step forward for our tech community to, the young and the old alike that want to get trained to be a pilot, so that's a good thing. So, that's at 10:00 this morning out at the WSU Tech campus on North Web Road. Okay, I don't, any other? I don't see any other comments, so Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
Commissioner Cruz.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 20 minutes until 9:45 for consultation with an attorney for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss pending litigation, and that the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 9:45.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye, and we will recess, or executive session into the boardroom, so you can stay here, and we will be back in 20 minutes. So you can stay here, and we will be back in 20 minutes.
Wow.